For the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
A pledge allegiance to flag the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everybody, to the Cliffset Park Board of Education, December 18, 2024 meeting. I'd like to ask our Board's Secretary Business Administrator, Lou Alfano, to call the roll, please.
Just read a quick notice, Mr. Capano, then I'll call the roll. The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law was enacted to ensure the rights of the public to have advanced notice of and to attend the meeting of public bodies in which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provision of this act, the Cliffside Park Board of Ed has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place thereof posted in the offices of the Bureau of Clerk, Bureau of Library, the Rec Department, the Office of the Board of Ed, and the offices at school numbers three, four, five, and six, and the high school on September 17, 2024. And notices were forwarded to reporters of the record, September 17, 2024. This is an official meeting. I will take the roll down, Mr. Capano.
Yes.
Mrs. Abreu is not here. Mr. Capano.
Yes.
Mrs. Fredo. Mr. Garcia is not here. Mr. Nadru.
Here.
Mr. Pantoliano is not here. Mr. Rinkort is not here. Mr. Russo.
Here.
Mr. Torbachia. Mr. Yunizi.
Here.
Okay, very good.
To the record, we have our high school liaison to the board, Valentina, correct?
Yes.
Welcome, thank you for joining us. And for the record, we have the Board of Education attorney, Stephen Fogerty, with us also. And I would like to start with our superintendent's report, Dr. Hayes, please.
Mr. Capano, tonight we have 35 personnel resolutions, vast majority, as always, professional development, teacher and lunch aids, hirings, six leaves of absence, some co-curricular resolutions, five resignations, and one retirement. And that's the resolution I'd like to go public with, and if I may read it. It states resolution recommended by the interim superintendent of schools to accept the retirement of Mary Foster, school counselor, middle school effective June 30, 2025. Though I've only been here a short time, I can tell you that I enjoyed a tremendous relationship with Mrs. Foster during my time with you. She's as good as elementary school and middle school guidance counselors come, and I know she's going to be sorely missed. So, Ms. Foster, on behalf of the board, I believe that we are accepting your resignation and wish you well in retirement with regret. We accept it with regret, but we wish you a lifetime of happiness in this new phase of your life. Mr. Nadru, I believe you wanted to address the resolution also.
Yes. As someone who went through the school system when Ms. Foster was coming in and running our program and being a great guidance counselor, we appreciate her hard work. I appreciated having her as a guidance in my life for those years, and she's been a guidance to my siblings and to countless other students. We accept the resolution 27 with regret, but we know that you're going to do great in whatever you choose to do in this retirement. So, thank you, Ms. Foster.
I'd just like to indicate what Clayton said. Ms. Foster's been instrumental to many people in our elementary school there at the middle school. I was fortunate enough that my two daughters attended the middle school, and one of my daughters, Ms. Foster, was very instrumental in placing her in a high school where she could excel at ice hockey. And I'm proud to say my daughter has probably a half a dozen Division One and Division Three girls' ice hockey commitments as of last night. And Ms. Foster was extremely instrumental with that. And I wish her nothing but the best of luck, and it's going to be a big loss to the district, but she deserves a good retirement. Thank you, Mr. Hayes.
Thank you, Mr. Capano. Mr. Alfano, that concludes the reported superintendent, with the exception of wishing everyone a wonderful holiday season and appreciate everyone's support throughout the school year. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Alfano, anything on your finance report, and then we'll go into committee reports?
Yes, Mr. Capano. I'm just, Mrs. Fredo, we just want to get her on the line. I apologize for the delay. Yes, Mr. Capano, if you take your eyes.
Hello.
Lisa will be right with you, okay? It's Lou.
Okay.
Thank you so much. So, we just went through our administrative review audit, which is essentially a food service operations audit. Went very well, the Pomptonian folks, I thought, did yeoman's work, as well as Maria Romeo on our free and reduced lunch applications and the whole operations process. Lisa Levin left, she was part of the USDA last Thursday. She's very complimentary on our food service processes, both on a fiscal side and an operational side. And I just wanted to throw kudos out to the Pomptonian team of Kat Scotto and Alex Rosenberg and our own Maria Romeo, who heads up the free and reduced application process. If you take your eyes to pages 20 to 23, you'll see essentially four consecutive resolutions. We're here to approve them tonight for a full year 24 audit with the year ending June 30, 2024. Essentially, it's approving the corrective action plan and the synopsis of audit. That's what you'll be approving tonight. That'll be uploaded to a homeroom in the Department of Education for validation and approval. We just had a, our audit was just reviewed and presented by Mr. Steve Wilcox, and gave an overview of the findings and the surplus to the Board of Ed. We had no material findings. We had some minor compliance findings, which the school district is in very good shape financially, thank goodness.
Lou, you should be proud of yourself. It was $16 you forgot to send back to the state.
Out of nine, out of nine million, yeah, so thank you for that, Mr. Capano. So, yeah, I'd like to thank the business office and the entire staff and the board. You don't do, we don't do it by ourselves in regard to getting through each and every year. Yeah, the audit was pretty clean, and what you're approving tonight is four separate, unique resolutions, but they're essentially the corrective action plan that will be uploaded to the state via homeroom. So, I thank everyone for their support. And this year's off to a good start also in regard to how we're doing revenues versus expenses, and looks like we're going to be pushing out some surplus again for the end of June fiscal year. So, that's pretty much my overview for the finance component.
Lou, after this evening's audit presentation from our auditor, Steve Wilcox, I want to commend yourself and your staff.
I'm honored.
You know, it's a 60 million-plus budget and has a lot of bells and whistles with it, and it's well done.
Okay, I appreciate that, Mr. Capano.
And if you need the $16, we'll all chip in and go before you.
There you go.
But I was told you returned it right away back to the state.
Yeah, it's gone, it's gone.
Thank you.
Of course.
Anything else, Mr. Alfano?
No, that's it on my end, Mr. Capano.
At this time, committee reports from the board, any committee reports? Just want to touch on, as you know, our high school lobby renovation is continuing. A lot of the internal work has been completed, we're sheet rocked inside, drop ceilings are starting to go in. Temporary partitions have been put up for winter sports, and the outside is moving along. Having some issues with the delay of the entrance glass doors, as a lot of supply chain stuff are backordered. But we hope to have this project wrapped up as soon as we can get it done, in the next six to eight weeks. And that's pretty much building in grounds. We have met with Mr. Alfano in reference to next year's financial positioning and some capital improvement projects to possibly enhance some of our schools. And we'll get into detail with that as the year progresses. Any other questions for committee reports? Okay. At this time, I'll open it up to the public, anybody from the public, any questions? And before I do that, I apologize. Valentina, any good news going on at the high school, anything you'd like to report?
As far as right now, nothing much, but last week we had a club fair, and there was a lot of kids that showed up, which is really good, because next year they will be able to join those clubs, and they're learning to get more involved in the school as well.
Excellent. Anything else?
Um, no.
Thank you for joining. Anybody from the public, any questions or comments? Sure, if you can come up, state your name.
Mr. Capano, can I just interject? Maybe we can get a vote first on the agenda.
Can you vote on the agenda first?
Vote money, sir.
Or at least on the phone.
Yeah, yeah.
10 seconds.
I apologize.
Could we please get a motion to approve this evening's December 18?
That was Mr. Torbachia. And Mr. Russo? Okay, very good. Mr. Capano, thank you for that.
Sure.
Mr. Capano?
Yes.
Mrs. Fredo?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Fredo.
Thank you.
We appreciate it. Take care now.
You too.
Bye-bye. Mr. Nadru?
Yes.
Mr. Russo?
Yes.
Mr. Torbachia?
Yes.
Mr. Yunizi?
Yes.
So passed. Thank you, Mr. Capano.
I'm sorry.
No, no worries, no worries at all. Sorry about that.
Not a problem. Hi, Heather Herman, 482 Lincoln Avenue.
Hi, Heather, how are you?
I don't know if it has anything to do with school board, but how do crossing guards work and get positioned?
The Cliffside Park Police Department handles that.
Okay, so there's no way you could put in like a good word that the top of Lincoln and Grove is a horrible corner in the morning? I mean, kids literally run for their lives because of all the traffic going through there?
People coming in from Bourbon Boulevard.
No, people coming from the school.
Right.
So, they leave from the school and they fly through like it's some freeway. Kids literally are running across the street. I tried coming up to drop off my son at school and almost get side swiped, you know, so, and then people pulling over, and just ridiculous, they block in corners. And they had a crossing guard there on Saturday for the breakfast with Santa. So, I just figure if they have one for that, they can have one for when the kids are actually walking without their parents. So, I don't know if that's something you can kind of put a good word in.
Well, we have Lieutenant Torbachia here, and I think he'll share it with the, you know, officer in charge and also with the traffic bureau.
Yeah, I mean, like, my son doesn't normally walk to school, and he's very, he's older, but like, there are little kids on our block that do walk, and, you know, just looking at the kids literally run, like, it's, it's, for a parent, it's like, wow, like, it's hard. And then you see the kid, the parents that are leaving, they're literally just flying through that intersection. So, stop sign or crossing guard would be a big benefit. No, not going from, not on Grove, not on Grove. If you're trying to cross, I mean, drive down there at like 7:45 in the morning? Hold your life in your hands.
Well, definitely, Teddy will have to make that decision.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else from the public, any questions or comments?
Anybody else from the public, any questions or comments? Name, address, please?
Mark Muller, 42 Lincoln. How are you guys? Happy holidays, right?
Likewise.
Um, it's been a few months since our first meeting. Um, just trying to figure out, was there any work being done on, uh, professionals looking into the overcrowding issue? I know the engineering or architects were discussed. Has there been any progress on that, to address that?
Yes, we, we've, first of all, as you know, our fire official has approved our plan. Uh, and once the lobby opens up, it's become more of a, instead of a tighter lobby, more of a vast lobby that's going to be an overflow with the cafeteria, uh, you know, won't be tables or anything in there, but we're looking at the, uh, nice, against the walls, nice counters with stools underneath, and we are in the, we discussed it this evening, of potentially, under the state guidelines, we have to do always a, a forecast of our physical need assessment. We've done that forecast, and we tie it back into our enrollment forecast. And like I said, the enrollment at the elementary level has been pretty stagnant, the same. At the high school level, we've seen a, a, an increase of about sixty kids from the previous year, uh, and what we're going to do is hire an engineering firm or consultant to do a physical need assessment on where we can expand. All probabilities, we were trying to expand with the borough, with the synagogue, we put apples and apples together, we had to table that because it just wasn't feasible for the taxpayer to take the big burden of doing a massive project like that. So we're looking to do a physical need assessment on where we can expand.
So currently at the high school, there's what, you said just under fourteen hundred?
Thirteen hundred and change.
Thirteen twenty-five.
Thirteen twenty-five. Just, and I didn't know this until the other night, do you guys even know the occupancy load for that cafeteria?
Sure, a few hundred, yeah.
Two hundred and fifty.
Yeah, correct. We had this dialogue at the.
Yes, no, I just, it was funny, because I went there for another meeting, and I actually saw the sign posted on the wall for two hundred and fifty kids. So there's a, a lack of, for eleven hundred kids, a spot to eat. And I know you said the entryway is going to be open, or your auditorium and gymnasium.
We, our principal has made other.
Absolutely.
Alternatives, and we've discussed it in the past, at the last meeting, there's pros and cons, going to the, the block lunch because it's more advantageous for the education of the kids, et cetera, so we're trying to work around those priorities.
So like you said, you're, you're expecting still about approximately thirteen hundred kids in the school next year?
Yes, sir.
Correct? And you said there would be a tax burden on the taxpayers of the town for an addition or anything else like that?
Not necessarily an addition, on to develop a brand-new annex to a school, et cetera.
There are other towns that have this issue as well, right? It's not only Cliffside.
Correct.
Other towns have officers or people in charge to confirm that children live in the town they go to school in.
We have that, we have a residency office.
We have a residency?
Yes, absolutely. Uh, Teddy, is that Sergeant Lieutenant Miller?
Yes.
Yes, well, from the police department.
So Mike, Mike Miller's in charge of that, Teddy?
Yes.
Okay, all right. So I just, I just want to clarify, we all know, I, I, I mean, I know, I have friends of friends that live actually in Cliffside that don't go to Cliffside Park High School. They go to other schools, but literally, they live in Cliffside Park.
Yeah.
We know that, so it's the same from town to town. So I just want to make sure that Cliffside is on top of this, and whatever documents or leases or lease agreements that they have to provide you, that Mike is on top of this.
Two years ago, we did, I'm sorry, uh, Mark, two years ago, we did a re-registration just to try to, because we were convinced like you were, can't be, can't be, can't be, and we did the re-registration, and everything correlated, and it worked, and Sergeant Miller, Lieutenant Miller now, has certified, anytime there's an inquiry, he goes out there, and he doesn't go during normal hours as a police officer. He goes according to his plan, and have we caught one or two here? Yes, but not anything that's of a major issue in the district.
What, do you know off the top of your head what it costs the borough per child?
What our education per child costs, that comes from the State Department of Ed, I think it's in the seventeen thousand dollars, depends on the grade level. Kindergarten, elementary, less expensive than high school.
On average, it runs about sixteen thousand, on average.
Yeah, average K to twelve.
For a regular K to twelve.
New Jersey's the third highest in the, in the nation.
Yeah. Yes, sir.
So I just want to make sure everything's going for.
Yeah, um, Lieutenant Miller active and Detective Young does residency calls as well.
I'm sorry?
Detective Young, Sean, is that Sean's last?
Yeah.
Yeah, Detective Young does them as well. We have two Cliffside Park officers who do follow-up on residency checks.
Okay.
Lieutenant Miller spearheads.
Lieutenant Miller spearheads all the school safety initiatives.
And all that information is interoperable, correct?
Yes.
Yes, great. Thank you, guys, have a great holiday.
Thank you, thank you. Anybody else from the public have any comments or questions? That wraps up our meeting this evening. I want to thank everybody for, for joining us, I'm sorry that we're a little bit late. Any questions from the public, Frank?
Uh, none on mine.
Okay, thank you. Wishing everybody a wonderful Christmas and a wonderful holiday. Have a good evening, everybody. Could we please have a motion to adjourn this evening's meeting?
I'll make a motion.
And a second if I may?
Thank you.